All right, welcome, everyone. I call the February 7, 2024 Planning Commission meeting to order. The main purposes of tonight's meeting are nomination, an election of a vice chair, and a study session on the 2024 Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update, the transportation element. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our hybrid meeting format. The City of Bothell is providing the option to attend this meeting either in person or remotely via Zoom. For those participating via Zoom, the chat and question functions are not available for use to ensure compliance of the Open Public Meeting Act. We have a public comment agenda item at the beginning of the meeting. This time is for comments on issues not on tonight's agenda. Please limit these comments to three minutes. We will be using... Lights, yes, the lights are up there. To signal available time, although there's no one out there. When the yellow light appears, comments will have 20 seconds. When the red light appears, time is up. Please note that the City of Bothell does not tolerate verbal harassment. And please remember this during your comments. Public comment and hearing testimony will be allowed both in person and via Zoom. Those wishing to comment via Zoom were asked to submit an online form by 3:00 P.M. today. People wishing to submit written comments were also encouraged to submit those comments by 3:00 P.M. Email was encouraged as well and will be acknowledged. Those in attendance may comment... May also make comments and have been asked to indicate their desire to comment on the sign-in sheets. The Imagine Bothell notice, city website, and tonight's agenda all provided information to the public for providing comments. Video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. For our phone-in callers, during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they're referencing so that everyone may follow along. At this point, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of commissioners. Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Westerbeck?
Here.
Commissioner Robson?
Present.
Commissioner Anders?
Here.
Oh, you're on...
Here.
You're sideways.
Is that better?
Oh, there you are. And Commissioner Gustafson?
Here.
In addition, we have Steve Morikawa, Deputy Public Works Director, and Sarah Frost, Community Engagement Specialist, back there, and... Mary Beth Quinn, also assisting at the keyboard back there. Lastly, before I begin, we'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking and mute your microphone when not speaking. If you're also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. At specific breaks in the presentation, I'll be calling on members who wish to speak. If you want to speak, please indicate this by raising your hand, and I will call on you as I see you. This will help avoid the problem of having two people speaking at the same time. Identify yourself before you ask a question, make a motion, second a motion, or participate in debate. And please mute your microphone when not speaking. So the first item on the agenda is public comment. The city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. We do not have anyone in the audience, so I'm not going to worry about that. We did receive a letter earlier in the day that was forwarded to commissioners, and I'm looking around, seeing heads nod that we have reviewed that. So be assured, we did receive it and read it. So with that, we'll move on. Is there anyone online wishes to participate?
Not at this time.
Okay, given that there is no one in the audience and there's no one in the Zoom waiting room wishing to speak, we will move off of the public comment period. And we also have Riad Trawani with us, Transportation Supervisor, who will be participating tonight, so welcome. So approval of January 7 meeting minutes. Is there a motion to January 17th? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Still moved. Commissioner Jones?
Commissioner Jones has moved. Is there a second?
I wasn't here, so I'm going to let you.
Seconded.
Commissioner Robson has seconded. It has been moved and seconded that we adopt the meeting minutes from the January 17 meeting. Any discussion around those minutes? Around? Seeing none? All in favor of adopting the January 17 minutes as submitted?
Aye.
Okay, it is unanimous. The January 17 minutes are adopted. Moving on to old business, our previous vice chair has resigned from the commission to move on to the council, so we have a vacancy. And per our bylaws, we need to nominate a new vice chair. There will be elections for chair and vice chair in May, so could be a brief experience if you're not interested in staying there long, but we do need to fill that position. So is there anyone who would like to throw their name in or nominate anyone for vice chair?
So this is Commissioner Jones, and I'd like to move that Clara Robson is nominated to be vice chair.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a second for Commissioner Robson?
I'd second Commissioner Robson nomination.
Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Seeing none, we have a winner. All in favor of the motion nominating Commissioner Robson?
Aye.
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 And it is unanimous, so welcome, vice chair.
Thanks.
You'll get all this if you need it. So moving on, our new business or study session this evening is the Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update, Discussion of the Transportation Element. So I will turn this over to staff to introduce this item and lead us through it.
Thank you very much. Let me get this started. Okay, so good evening. Good evening. So I think you met Riad, who's kind of co-partners with me, working through the transportation element. It's a heavy lift. And this is Carmen Kwan. I think you've met her before from Fer and Peers. She's the project manager, and she's going to do a lot of the heavy lifting tonight. I'll just be talking intermittently. Essentially, tonight, we're providing you a lot of information, and we'll talk a lot about process. So it will help us get to the finish line. What we want to do is be very efficient, so the next time we see you, you guys can understand the process that we went through, because we'll be coming back with projects and programs, and it really matters how we got there. What we probably really want to focus on tonight is criteria, because there will be ability, when we figure out all our revenue and we figure out the projects we have to do, there will likely be some little bit of revenue left that we can spend how we want to spend, and that's part of the criteria selection process. So with that, I think I'll hand it to Carmen.
Thank you. So you're probably all familiar with this graphic on the screen. It shows the process of the transportation element update, and we've been sharing this for the last year now. And we're at that third tile there. We are currently evaluating various future growth scenarios for Bothell. And with that, we are going to be identifying potential projects and programs that are needed to support the transportation system over the next 20 years. Throughout this process, we'll be, again, coming back to Planning Commission, City Council, to keep you up to date on our progress. And we'll continue going through public engagement. So one of the last agenda items tonight, we'll be talking about the various public engagement events that we've completed over the last year and some of the feedback we've heard, and then upcoming events.
So just to give you a little more history, we had hoped to be further along on the programs, project list, and prioritization. Our original schedule was actually to have a lot of the projects listed by this time. One of the things that has held us up is, in order to get the projects, we have to finish the modeling, and the modeling is based on the land use alternatives. And that took a little while to put together. And then what also happened is the legislature had been tossing things at our community development, ADU and middle housing, and that also tweaks everything on how things are going to turn out. So we actually started modeling in late December, and they're going to try to get through it in a couple months rather than three months. And once we get that done, we can go through our project selection list and identify what we're going to need to do. So again, a lot of what we're going to do today is talk about process and how we're going to select the projects, how we're going to do that. So if we get a good understanding, when we come back with the project list, we can kind of just move on from there. So tonight, what we're going to go through, mostly Carmen, is the transportation element goals and policies we've been working on. She's going to give us an update on where we are in that. Talk about draft project prioritization process, which is probably the meat of tonight and where we really need you to focus and understand how we're going to do this, and then we can talk about the criteria, and we really want your feedback. Safety analysis, we're going to give you a snapshot where we are, what we've been finding out. But again, projects haven't yet come out of that yet. And then Carmen's going to give you a summary on what we've done to date with public engagement, part of which has been with the overall process, but part of which transportation had to kind of do separately in order to get information that it needed. So with that, I think I'm going to start, Carmen, on transportation element goals and policies.
Thanks, Steve.
Next slide?
Thanks, Steve. So part of the transportation element update has been coordinating with staff to modernize the element itself. One of the first steps that we did was update the transportation priorities. This is something we've shared with Planning Commission last year. It's also been part of our public survey last fall and was also part of the Comprehensive Plan Open House that we shared with the public. So those priorities have been modified to develop the transportation overall goals for the element. We've also taken feedback from guiding principles that have been developed by staff, the new climate element, as well as the D E and I review that had gone through the existing comprehensive plan to incorporate that feedback into the updated goals and policies within the transportation element. We've also looked at what are some of the new topics that may be required or would be a good idea for the city to include, and we also looked at potential duplications of policies that could be removed to help simplify the element. Some of the new topics that we've identified to incorporate are shown on the screen here. In particular, it could be updating the element to incorporate recent initiatives like complete streets ordinance, updating the safety section to incorporate goals of zero death and serious injury crashes in the city. With the climate element, there have been new commitments that have been identified that we want to incorporate into the element. And then technological changes can be EV charging, curbside management, freight access, and micro mobility. There's also a new transportation system resiliency section that's required, and there are new policies and actions related to that. Next slide.
Any questions on that? Again, more process. We are currently a little bit behind everybody else on those policy and development in the transportation element, kind of like following last. We get all the climate stuff, and we kind of put it all into the TE. And I think the goal is to try to get everything together in addition for later March, to put the first draft together.
Yes, so the draft, all of our updates will be incorporated in the draft Comprehensive Plan, which I believe is being released in late March or April to the public.
So the project list development and prioritization process, you would think it would be something really straightforward. You know, you get a list of 1 to 1,000 projects, you agree on a criteria, apply, and you just start working from 1, 2, 3. Unfortunately, it's not quite that straightforward. There are things we like to do, and part of the process will help us. As an example, one of the things we're trying to do is promote things like transportation demand management. So we have currently started our Canyon Park Subarea Transportation Demand Management Program, TDM. Riad's running that. In about three weeks, there's going to be a survey going out that initiates what some of the obstacles and tries to find out what some of the obstacles in getting out of your car and using some other mode are. Those kind of things, if we can be successful at that, and let's say we can bring it to downtown or maybe to North Creek Business Area, and then there's a Red Barn that's going to be a little bit more of an activity center, that can help us reduce a little bit how much vehicles we have to design our streets for. So every little bit helps. So again, the process helps us. Before we start identifying those transportation projects, one of the things we want to do is make sure that we've accounted for programs like that, so we can take a little bit off the top. In some sense, it makes sense from a practical and getting federal and state grant point of view to combine projects when possible. There are different types of competitions, and a lot of times, the larger transportation funding comes when you have multimodal projects. So these are larger projects that you can score well in different areas. You can say, well, we provide some capacity, we provide for transit, we are putting in bike lanes, we're putting in sidewalks, there's a safety issue here. It just starts collecting points, and you can compete well against other projects in the region, and you can get grant funding. So one of the things we have to think about is, how are we going to combine these projects? Revenue is not always equal as well. Some of them can be used for only certain things. So when we get transportation impact fees, in the past or currently, we can only use them for vehicle capacity projects. We are going to now be able to use them for pedestrian and bike projects, which is great. But there are things like safety projects and resiliency projects, which Riad is working on, that there's no identified source of funding, and you can't use TIF or transportation impact fees. So you have to consider those things as well. Some things are likely better accomplished through an annual program rather than discrete projects. Discrete projects pretty much work well when they're one-time only and they're of a certain size. If you have something like a sidewalk crossing program where you're putting up flags or even flashing beacons, oftentimes, just one by itself won't compete well for a grant. You'd rather have a safety program that's ongoing, and you consider locations every year. So there are some things that were better in programs than discrete projects. And then finally, there are some limitations on funding sources. So currently, this is transitioning. There are kind of ways you can get funding, like larger transportation projects, there typically is more money federal-wise. Multimodal is the best. They have a non-motorized category, but it kind of limits itself to about $2 million. If you do something like the East Riverside Drive Trail, that's like a $20 million project, so $2 million doesn't help you much. So recognizing that there are different sources of funding, and some of them are only applicable in other areas, we also have to put our list together considering that. So a lot to think about. So when Carmen goes through this, keeping those in mind, make sure you ask a lot of questions, because we want to make sure you understand and how this process is going to take place, because that's very important.
Thank you. So what I have on the screen here is a flow chart to describe how we're developing the transportation project list. And this transportation project list is one of the key outcomes of the transportation element update in that it identifies how the transportation investments will be spent across the city and will shape what types of projects are most important to the city to develop the transportation system that you would all like to see. So first, I wanted to emphasize that the transportation project list, as Steve mentioned, is composed of projects that the city have already identified. So those would be projects from the city's modal plans, like the citywide bike network plan, sidewalk prioritization study, as well as other projects that the city has committed to completing. There will also be ongoing maintenance and safety, ongoing maintenance and other programs like safety that will be incorporated in the list. And that would be number two on that flow chart. And then moving on to number three, there will be vehicle capacity projects that will be identified as part of our transportation modeling. And so this is really looking at, with the expect of population and job growth in Bothell over the next 20 years, what types of vehicle projects might be needed to maintain and meet the city's level of service standards. Moving on to number four, there are new projects that will be identified through this planning process, and that can be through the safety plan update, transportation system resiliency projects could be identified through that path. We've also had a number of public comments that could identify another project that would be incorporated here. And so now we have a large bucket of projects, right? There's many spread across the city. Our next process would be mapping all of those to identify what projects could be consolidated into corridor projects or multimodal projects. As Steve has mentioned, they may be more competitive grouped together for outside funding sources as opposed to individual sidewalk projects. The last step here is developing the final project list, and it will generally follow the vehicle projects that are needed to maintain the city's level of service standards, the ongoing and committed programs that the city has identified, and then all other projects would be prioritized using the criteria that we'll be showing on the next slide. So we have eight categories here, and these all relate back to the transportation priorities and goals that we've developed with city staff and the public over the last year. We've identified, within each of these categories, specific evaluation criteria, and we'll be identifying how well each project meets these criteria. Working with staff, we've provided the recommended points allocated to each category, as shown on the far right column in the table. And we are looking for each project, for example, in safety, how well would this project improve conditions on a high-risk corridor that we've identified? Or does it respond to identified common risk factor of fatal and serious injury collisions? I don't want to go through every single category, but I think the idea here tonight is to see if there are any questions about the approach that we're proposing that we can help clarify, or if there's feedback, we can take that into consideration.
Could you define IT slash TSMO, please?
The last quarter, ITS slash TSMO, that's the idea of using technology to improve the efficiency of the system as opposed to investing in capital projects to widen an intersection. So this could be something like having smarter traffic signal system so that along quarters, the traffics are coordinated to improve operations as opposed to widening the corridor to add a traffic lane.
Thank you.
Yes. This is Commissioner Jones. Could you help us understand how you came up with the points for the different categories? Because some are more points than others, and just curious about that.
That's a great question. I can start, and then maybe Steve can add on. We went back to the, we took a look at the transportation priorities that we had developed, and within each category, there were different goals that, for the transportation system. So we looked at how often safety had been brought up, how often pedestrian or multimodal facilities had been brought up, and that was a starting point for assigning a weight to each of these categories. And we shared that back with staff to gather their feedback, and they provide additional input on how they, how they felt about the results.
I'll just give you an exact definition of ITS and TSMO. ITS, Intelligent Transportation Systems. TSMO is, TSMO is Transportation System, okay, let me get this right in here. Transportation System Management and Operations. Basically, it's a set of strategies that focus on operational improvements that can maintain and even restore the performance of the existing transportation system before extra capacity is needed. Hopefully that keeps you up to date.
So in terms of these, when you guys on the council basically went over, I think how many we had, seven?
Six.
Six transportation goals. They weren't discrete. It wasn't just safety, you know, they kind of intertwined with each other. So we tried to look at all of them and tried to give points where we saw it mentioned more than once. So a couple things stood out. Safety was pretty important, so we tried to give, if you look at it, the total up to about 20 points. Non-motorized was important, so we tried to give points to pedestrians and bike. Transit, transit was important. We also have to recognize that we have somewhat limited ability to control transit. So we can control advocacy for transit, we can advocate for more, we can advocate for safety, we can advocate for things like that. But we can basically handle accessibility to those transit stops. That's more on our bucket. So that didn't seem like it would rise to the top in terms of points. Freight translates for us into economics, so we want, even though we're trying to get people out of their cars and go to the neighborhood grocery store, the neighborhood grocery store still needs to have deliveries there. So goods need to be able to move around, so that got some points. Climate change also is important. Maybe, you know, one could argue it should get more, but we can talk about that. Resiliency, we also, which again, starts overlapping, because we think climate change, but part of climate change was resiliency as well, so there's a little bit of overlap there. We didn't want to ignore ITS and TSMO. Riad's really big on it. He's a operations guru. But one of the important things about it is, rather than spend money on widening facilities and having very impactful, large-capacity projects, if you can do more ITS and TSMO, and there's only so much you can do, but you can squeak a little bit more out of it, so it is important. Some of these are a little bit crossover, and it gets very hard, because you could argue that if we put more pedestrian paths and bike facilities, it goes towards safety. So it's not total, and environmental, so they're not totally independent. So I think it's more of an art in what we heard rather than an exact science, which is why we would like your feedback on it.
So do you want to pause for feedback on?
That would be, well, there's a couple things. I guess I would also ask the question, we went through the process fairly quick. There's, it's fairly, there's a lot of, I think it's going to be a very iterative process. We want you guys to understand that. We also want you to understand that prioritization will be selectively used on a group of projects after we have pulled out things for safety programs, bridge programs, maintenance programs, after we have pulled out what vehicle capacity projects we absolutely have to have. We will have programs, like TDM programs, that we want to fund, because that will minimize our capacity projects. So all of those stuff that have been taken out, this will be applied to that remaining set of projects that come out of, like Carmen said, different buckets, safety, resiliency, bike, pedestrians. Safety, resiliency, bike path, and other stuff. So if there are questions on that, and you're not clear in the process, we could also clarify that before you guys get into this.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Anders?
Um, I have just a couple of questions. Um, on the points, I see that some of these have yes or no behind them. Do the points correlate to whether we answer that question in the affirmative or the negative? And I see that there is no yes-no question on the two safety points, so I'm just wondering why that is. And then my other question is, it all adds up to 100. Are we trying to get to 100 in assigning points within that 100? Is that 100% or whatever, or did it just work out that way?
Those are great questions. We could probably format everything into yes and no, um, so it's consistent.
Okay.
We can do that. A hundred, just a clean number. We don't, I mean, if we want to wind up at 98 or 95, that's, there's no real science behind that. So I think it's just a relative weight of each of your priorities.
Okay.
Any other Commissioner comments, questions? Commissioner Robson?
Thank you. Um, I'm just wondering on here, um, I know that you guys incorporate equality into all of your goal settings, which I so much appreciate it, but I noticed that that, um, something like accessibility or, um, you know, equality, um, isn't necessarily ranked here as a, um, as a criteria. And I think that increasing accessibility, um, are, are good projects to consider. So I'd like to see that listed there.
Oh, can I just include, that includes, um, improving areas of under, generally underserved areas, not just, so often when we think accessibility, we think, um, the disabled, but obviously that would also do, um, in, in, I'm speaking from the position of increasing accessibility, um, to generally underper- um, served areas of our city as well, just for clarification.
I think I also wanted, that's a great point I would clarify as well. You do not see equity up here. So you look at it, and if you try to put equity in here, I'm not sure how we would score that in projects that are very dissimilar from each other. So one of the things that, how we're going to do equity is in our process. So after we get our proj- projects, no matter which grouping of projects, so vehicle-based projects, let's say, we're going to look at that. We're going to look at a map, and we're going to see if it's equity distributed. It doesn't have more impacts in certain areas than others. Um, it's not all in one side of the city where maybe the income level is different from another side of the city. That's how we're going to look and make sure we've looked at equity. We felt it was very difficult to look at, just say, is this more equitable than another? Individually, it might be, but as you look at a group of it, you could get a group of projects that we think are equitable, but they all happen in one part of the city, and that's not going to be equitable. So I think what we're trying to say is the process is how we're going to look at that, and that's why you don't see it as actual prioritization criteria, if that makes sense.
Yeah, definitely. Doing equity within those projects, you know, when, when we're talking safety as well, you know?
Sure.
Um, okay, then I think maybe I just need a clarification, um, between, maybe between equity and accessibility, at least from my earlier comment. When we're looking at these projects, I'm thinking of the way you guys would use these to evaluate, is you get a project, and then you give it a score based on how safe, um, how it improves safety, based on how it produce, how it, um, improves sidewalks or trails. And then at the end of the project, it has a score, and you use that score to prioritize that project amongst other projects. I think, and I obviously want to, um, distribute our, um, these improvements equally, um, across our city. I think what I was talking about when I meant equity is, um, all, uh, um, maybe people with disabilities, they should, if it improves accessibility, um, a project that would maybe, um, reduce curb height or, um, in- incorporate more ramps, because God knows we need more ramps and those kinds of things, or, you know, um, has that potential. I would like to see that ranked as well as some of these other very important things, improving safety. But if we have yes, and it also has the potential to make things easier for, um, you know, and it is in a generally underserved area, or, and it would allow, um, you know, more accessible to mass transit for, uh, people with special needs. I would like to see that as a criteria, um, you know, as wa- along all of these things. Yeah, and I, I just want to distinguish that from being, um, and we want to make sure we're serving all of our areas of Bothell equally. Absolutely. I'm talking about equality throughout our population and those kinds of increases and improvements.
So what I'm hearing you say is accessibility is not necessarily, as an example, we could say there's a transit stop, you want to be able to get there. Your accessibility is making sure that all our populations are served.
Are served. It's accessible to all people.
Right.
Rather than.
Okay, that is great. That's a great clarification. Thank you.
And Commissioner Anders, your hand is still up?
No, she's saying.
Yeah? Okay.
No, it shouldn't be. Sorry, I can't lower it.
Oh, there we go. Okay, I just don't want to miss you.
Okay.
Thanks. Other questions? All right, do you want to continue?
So before we continue, we might as well get down into the details. So we can add this on. How would you like us to redistribute some points in order to get this on? We could try to minimize the impact on the rest of them by taking, you know, a point here, a point there, and creating a new point. But maybe a sense of how much we should be looking for, like, should we be looking for 10 points, 15 points, five points? What's about right? And we can certainly go back and say, you know, we'll take a point here, 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 and try to get it to that, that level. Is that a fair question?
Wouldn't we need to, oh, sorry.
Commissioner Anders?
This is, this is, yes, sorry. Wouldn't that depend on, I mean, when you think about the factors that led to the points in the first place, how often it came up in, in discussions, that sort of thing? A comparison of that to the accessibility question? Um, and then how would we, how would we compare apples to apples? How would we know how many times the accessibility question came up in order to assign points?
That's a great point. I think what I'm hearing is in addition to the process that we're using to try to make sure we distribute projects and we don't weight them in the particular community, so to speak, what I'm hearing is this type, this accessibility is in addition to and would address equity issues as well. We can go back and take a look and see how often, and how that appeared in our seven, and try to distribute it accordingly. Certainly, we can do that.
Commissioner Jones?
I, I. I can. No, I was just going to say, I think that makes sense, but equitable distribution and, and accessibility is so important also that I don't, I wouldn't want to say extra way, but it should be considered in all of these things. So I'm just, it's difficult. It's not for me to assign points now, but I just wanted to make that point.
Commissioner Gustafson?
I'm Sarah Gustafson here. I have an idea. Perhaps you could create a second column if, if we really want to center equity. And then out of the 10 points for transit, uh, three of those would be equity transit points, so cross. This is in response to Commissioner Anders' great suggestion that it is part of every single thing here and not its own standalone category.
This speaks to their sort of idea of it being integrated as well, but more recognized.
I was wondering if, this is Commissioner Jones, I was wondering if you could remind us how you got the feedback on how often things were mentioned? If you could just remind us of that? Like, who are these stakeholders? Because, you know, sometimes when we do this work, those who are most disadvantaged aren't able to actually provide the feedback. So I, I'm just curious as to how that feedback process worked.
So when we developed the six, um, goals for transportation element only, not the overall goals, just the transportation element, we talked to Planning Commission, Council, and we put out a survey, and we went to our open house, all that feedback came in. And so we kind of finalized those six, and essentially, like I said, there's overlap because the way it is written, it's, it's pretty nice. It's very organic. It kind of flows very nicely, but it's not clear. It's not saying, well, safety is one, you know, capacity is another, equity is another. So we kind of just looked at it, and again, it was more of an art form and just felt like where, where did we feel these things ranked in what we heard? And like I said, safety came up pretty clearly, pedestrian and bike. And transit, transit does come up, but again, the impact that the city has on transit is less than in our own system. So we accounted for that a little bit. So it, it is an art form. So I think what I would suggest is either a methodology or at least a range of what you guys would be comfortable with, and then we can go back and try to massage that again. The next step that we will do is when we finally get our project list, we will use this for the project list, and we will likely come back to you with the criteria that we wound up with and the project list, and you can see how it kind of played out. Some of this stuff will be difficult because, um, accessibility on a project is not easy to necessarily always measure, because if we're doing a corridor accessibility, oftentimes means we design it a certain way. So it's going to get those points because we're going to put in ADA ramps. We're going to put, you know, we're going to make sure there's things there that, um, everybody can use. If it's along a transit corridor, the transit stops are designed a certain way to make sure that occurs. So a lot of projects may get that points just because of how we do things now. Um, and we're not talking, you know, we could, the way it might get more points of it is if it's in a certain location where there's known issues. That might be where it gets more points, you know?
Commissioner Robson?
Thank you. I wanted to make two points. Um, one, supporting absolutely Commissioner Jones' point that, um, those who are in most need of some of these accessibility options are not, very often not heard. The elderly, the homeless, um, those with physical or, um, mental disabilities can really struggle to be heard over the majority of the population. Um, and the majority of the population tends to voice their things that they experience, and therefore their voices will be heard more than over the needs of, um, um, those of, those among us who struggle more. And I think we can all agree, or at least I like to believe, that the way we focus on our least abled citizens, um, is really a testament to how our city is run and benefits everybody. So I would really like to pull this accessibility to the forefront. It is, it is so, so, so important. Um, and if, um, to your point about, um, it's a little hard to measure, perhaps we could just talk about it as accessibility improvement. So that would give extra points to areas where we, there's a known issue. And then improvement means you get points if you're going above and beyond the standards, the minimum standards for what you're putting in. Of course, we're ADA compliant, but is there an additional element of accessibility there? Um, that frankly, that's prob- that's unlikely for, people don't go above and beyond for accessibility. Maybe they should, and maybe they can get extra points. Um, and projects that do go above and beyond should get a little more weight to their project. Now, I know that, um, pedestrian and bikes, um, were, you know, people in our community are very invested in those. I'm very invested in those. So in, in honor of that, I think that we should remain with 15, give them 15 points, a little weighted on those two criteria. And then, um, perhaps we could just take five more from transit, because while I'm all about transit, we're not talking really about transit. We're talking about, um, promoting transit. And that's, that's ad, you know, um, advocacy and, um, propaganda, um, education, which are great things, but perhaps shouldn't be weighted as much when we're designing our transit plan as much as accessibility, which is a tangible improvement for people who have been overlooked for too long. So if I can suggest that we drop transit to five, um, pedestrian and bike to 15, and then put in accessibility to 10, because it absolutely deserves as much as our bike paths, um, and our climate, our resiliency, uh, we need to bring that to the forefront. So that's, that's my suggestion, um, on this chart.
Other Commissioner comments?
I just want to support what Commissioner Robson said.
Okay, Commissioner Jones, thank you. Other? I would note in the transit, you do say improve access to transit. I think you should also say access and accessibility, perhaps?
Also, probably transit, I probably should have said also that one other way we can help transit is to ensure they're reliable and efficient. So unfortunately, that sometimes translates into roads, you know, or signal operations. It could certainly be that transit signal priority for buses and things. But that's the other thing it does, is it makes sure that we pay attention so that if we have a very good bus rapid transit corridor, we're not ignoring everything so the buses can't get through reliably and on time, so.
Okay. So that useful feedback on criteria regarding accessibility?
Commissioner Westerbeck, I can also support Commissioner Robson's, um, suggestion for the reducing to 15 for the pedestrian bike and in the whole, and the, and the five from, excuse me, transit. Because I think about, as I've reflected here for a minute, how many people say, excuse me, they would like to do biking, walking, transit, et cetera, more, but there's, we're so locked into, uh, you know, car-first transportation systems that we're all working to, to move away from. I know that, we're all working hard on that. You guys are doing a great job, but we're still there. Excuse me, we're still there. And so putting a little bit extra focus on that can't hurt, um, and starts to kind of move that hopefully over 10 window, window a little bit so that people are thinking like, no, that's something really, hopefully in five years, it is not a headache to think about, I could ride a bike there safely, I could get on transit safely, whatever. So I'm just thinking about conversations I've had in the, you know, at the open houses and things like that, and hearing that from people. So, thanks.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Hi, this is Sarah Gustafson. When I was looking at this project, I really appreciate the way that you have laid out the building blocks and been so open in showing how things build up to the whole, and I really appreciate that. Um, my first comment is focused on the scoring system. I noticed that there was no level of service vehicle throughput here, and I wondered why that is. And then I saw on item number six on page 10, all vehicle capacity projects needed to maintain corridor level of service are automatically part of the project list. All other projects would be prioritized using these criteria to identify the higher-performing projects. I wanted to see how we feel about this because, to me, it seems the projects that prioritize vehicle throughput are automatically approved, and the project that prioritize all these other things that we care so much about are left vying for the resources that are left over. One suggestion, food for thought, is prioritize all the level of service projects and all these other projects together. Give level of service a ma- a number of points, and then we can be integrating these two ideas to see really how important they are to the community. Thank you. really how important they are to the community. Thank you.
So I think the city is moving toward multimodal and away from vehicles as much as possible. There is GMA requirements that for growth, we meet and we have a transportation system that can support it. So if we can't show that we can support it, then the only alternative we'll have in our comp plan is to cut our land use growth. But we do have by GMA certain targets that we have to hit. So this is, again, the process that I want to make sure you folks understand is, we get that, we rather not spend any more funds in capacity projects if possible. But there will be a minimum that we have, and unfortunately, it's just a reality. Currently, after COVID, we have 95% people in cars. We used to have 15% people in buses, and it's now down to 5%. The good part is we have 30 to 40% telecommuting. And if we can keep that, that helps us tremendously. Our total vehicle trips right now is about 15% below 2019. So we're down. So we're starting at a lower point, which is good. But again, remember, we're assigned certain amount of growth by 2044, and we have to show that we can do that. If we could show that we could do that by just bike and ped alone and transit, that would be great. But we've accounted for transit, ped and bike right now account for probably one, one and a half percent. And if we double the number of people or triple the number of people, it's still only a few percentage points. So unfortunately, the way we're doing this, and again, this is why I wanted to talk to you about processes, we're trying to implement programs like ITS, TSMO, TDM, and More Than Canyon Park, we're going to recommend it in downtown Red Barn and North Creek Business Park, take a few percentage points away from the vehicles that we need if we're successful, do the minimum we can in terms of capacity vehicle improvements. Right now, the good part about that is those are the ones that compete really well. Everybody's transitioning. And right now, the grant programs are also transitioning. And there was a discussion at a certain level about potentially not providing grants for capacity, but that did not get approved, I think, because people are still recognizing that. From a practical point of view, people are still in vehicles, and we have to have a transition period. So we're going to try to reduce our trips as much as possible. And then we're going to try to do as minimal as possible from the capacity projects. And hopefully, we'll have as much as we can left over for everything else, which is what we're trying to prioritize.
Commissioner Jones?
I have a comment and then a question. So just a comment overall that, I mean, I remember, I can think back, you know, 30, 20, 30 years, and we were having the same conversation about renewable energy. And oh, we could never as a population actually go towards renewable energies. Yeah, well, it's always going to be just a few percent. And it really took, it took a lot of will by voters and leaders in government to come up with incentive programs and invest a lot in terms of alternative energy and to sort of push the industry in that direction. And so this is not a critique. I mean, I appreciate that that you are first looking at how you could reduce some trips while still recognizing that we are reliant on cars. And so it is incremental and long term. And so it's, well, I wish it was more. I realize there are limitations for the city, so I get that. My question is kind of a weird question. We, I think we all can list examples of transportation projects that were done with the best of intent, and it led to unintended consequences. How do you count for that in the criteria? And just as an example, gentrification, not anticipating that, wow, when we do this, we just moved all these people, we sort of pushed them out because suddenly it was a very attractive area because of those bike lanes and those walking paths. And a different group of people came in. How do you factor that into your modeling? I mean, I realize it's kind of one of those oddball questions, but but in my field, we end up using those as cases as to, in terms of poor planning. It's always good to look backwards, right?
So in terms of in terms of large projects where we're going to grow the road, and we have the opportunity to grow, you know, fill in because there's more capacity now, there's really not many places left in Bothell that you can actually widen the road and make a difference. So we're doing one now, regardless of this plan. It's the old 527. We're widening it from downtown to 240th. So there'll be five lanes, and we can get swift down here, multimodal project. I mean, if we just put sidewalks and cross sidewalks and protected bike lanes there, it'd probably cost three quarters of what it costs anyway, just because. So that's one location. We're still looking at 527 between I-405 and State Road 524. It's intermittent, three lanes in each direction. So one of our projects currently on our books, not even with this new plan, is the existing plan, is fill in those three lanes, because there's a lot of cars trying to get through that area. In terms of actually adding lanes, right now, that's about it. We'll see what our model shows based on the growth and what we may need. We have Ninth Avenue, we have 35th Avenue, that are two lanes, arterials. They don't have sidewalks in most of it, they don't have bike lanes in most of it, they don't have a third two-way left turn lane where necessary. So two-way left turn lanes can be called capacity a little bit. The rest of their street system, a lot of the improvements are, you know, adding a left turn pocket here and there, those are capacity, because you have queues that are backing everybody up. So the gentrification could occur in some of those areas, because 35th, if we get that project done, would look nice. So could Ninth. But I think Ninth is already kind of building out, there's new neighborhoods going in. The protected bike lanes and the nice sidewalks are requirements of everybody. So whether you build one house or you build a development, that frontage needs to go in. So we don't pick and choose where in the city that's going to happen. That's going to happen everywhere eventually. Maybe not in my lifetime, but eventually the city will look more like that. So I understand, but I'm not sure how we could. One of the things we can do is when Carmen finally tells us what capacity we have to shoot for and what projects we have up, you know, she might come up with a list of projects and say, in order to meet the growth requirement, you have to do this. We may have alternatives. In other words, we may be able to say, well, we can do this project or this project. And those are the decisions that might help what you're talking about. It also might help the equity part as well, in terms of making sure that the projects we pick aren't just in one particular area and serve one particular population. Yeah. So again, it, to me, it's not just a criteria, it's also the process we go through. Yeah.
Other, Commissioner Gustafson?
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. I have a few radical suggestions, and maybe my fellow commissioners can help me flesh out what's going on here. I'm trying to free up more points in this 100-point rubric for accessibility and safety. I'm wondering if freight needs this many points. I'm wondering if we could even reduce it to zero, because if we're improving vehicle throughput already, and we need to do that, I think freight would be somewhat at least related to vehicle throughput. I know it's not the same as single occupancy vehicles. And then I, the next one, again, it's just food for thought, because I really like the idea of ITS TSMO being called out as a separate item, because we need creative transportation strategies, and they need to be not lost in the sauce. But I also wonder, at the same time, is ITS TSMO already going to be included in the level of service improvements? How do we feel about including it here as well? And if we include it here as well, could we maybe indicate that this would be in the service of some of these other items? So we're not just repeating the level of service improvements that we already think might be a little bit over prioritized?
Discussion? Mr. Robson?
Actually, I would like, to that point, just to give a little clarification on what are the different requirements between for freight and for just single occupancy vehicles? What, if we're talking about improves freight operations, how is that different than single? What kind of things would we be seeing?
So freight, there's a couple of things that I think are freight, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong. But one of the freight things is larger trucks coming in, Safeway trucks. Typically, what you want to do is you want to make sure they can make the movements. If we now, this is the battle we fight. We want to narrow lanes because we want to slow people down. But if we narrow them too much, we can't get trucks through. And it's hard for a driver, you know, we say, oh, we want to narrow your lane down to 11 feet, and the freight guy goes, my truck is 11 feet wide. You're basically giving me zero tolerance to get through. So that's one aspect. The other one, and interestingly enough, freight lines up with emergency response as well, because we have fire trucks trying to go down certain arterials. And if we try to make it too pedestrian friendly, and they can't make the turn, then it becomes kind of a critical thing. So that's one aspect. The other freight is a little bit, I guess, more difficult to define, but I would say more like curb management as well. Freight nowadays looks a little different. There are smaller trucks, there are Amazon trucks, and you have to have curb space and allow that to occur, because not everybody gets a big truck to deliver their goods anymore. So to me, those are probably the two big aspects. I would recommend that if you want to knock it down, that's great. I would recommend not zero, because freight also has some grant, and we don't want to ever say we've never got gave it, you know, consideration. So I would keep it there, but certainly if you think we could knock it down, that would be great. I kind of like, Red, my, Red's going to kick me under the table, but I kind of like your idea about ITS and TSMO. We could make it a requirement of consideration for every project, rather than consider it as a separate project. We could say, when you do a corridor project, when you do a street project, you have to consider ITS and TSMO, and then we won't have to use it as a criteria. I don't know what you think about that.
Yeah, I don't like it, you already know that. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So ITS is intelligent transportation systems. So it's not going to take much of, it's not going to take much of any, you know, demand for, away from other people. So when you are improving, you know, I have signal operations experience for like 30 years in my life in here. So when I am improving, for example, the way how the traffic signal system is working, it's not just for cars. The buses will improve, the pedestrians don't have to wait as long at the traffic signal, they do not get frustrated, and they do not start walking and jaywalking against the roots of the road, and they don't get hit by vehicles. So there is safety component for that, there is operational component from a multimodal level of service as well. So that should be like 99 points to me. I'm just kidding. So, and, you know, unfortunately, you know, you can't always have these TSMO projects as part of a bigger project. Sometimes you really need to go in and just change the signal phasing, for example, to have an improvement. Does not necess, it's just going to take some money, right, and some resources to get it done, and everybody will be happy the way how it is, you know, I'm improving the buses, I'm improving the freight, I'm improving the pedestrians, the bicycles. Everybody gets a part of the pie and the benefit of improving. So this is, you're trying the most efficient way of doing it without having to go to capacity. And if you don't do it, you're going to have to do a capacity. And if you do capacity, then you can't have funds for anything else. So.
I'd be inclined to keep it in. Mr. Gustafson?
Yeah, Sarah Gustafson here. Thank you so much for explaining this. I think actually this is how the Netherlands is able to get a reasonable vehicle throughput, while at the same time making it a lot easier for people to cross the street. So absolutely, let's keep it in. I think that explanation was really helpful to see how it supports these. Again, pushing, I might say, ITS TSMO components in service of the other priorities listed here. Just to emphasize, we're not doing it for the vehicles, although that that is a benefit that goes along with it. These are specifically really cool things that are going to help us achieve these other goals.
I think it would be useful to perhaps be a little clearer in that criterion, what it is. So that would benefit there. Two other thoughts. One is around the equity, noting that the the other projects which come first have this separate paragraph in equity. So you're going to do the, you're going to have your project list, and when you finalize that list, then you're going to look at equity overall. Is that a better way to do it? Or is the path we've begun to go down here is making equity one of the criteria a better way to do it? And I don't know the answer to that.
So one thing, just to remind you, like, I believe Rita has came in to you before within the past six months or so about the pedestrian projects and all of that. And part of that was really equity. So resiliency, part of it is equity, as I said. So I'm not so sure how to, how, you know, those projects, you know, there is going to be equity component part of it already, and you're going to double dip on equity kind of again, I'm not so sure that everybody's going to get an equity point, everybody's going to get accessibility point. So how is that going to help me get a different scoring system if I'm adding five points to every single or 10 points for every single one of these projects? I may be wrong, but.
So this is Commissioner Jones. So to, in terms of the point you raised, Kevin, Commissioner Karenon, I think there is a difference between, and correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Robson, I think there is a difference between what we were talking about in terms of accessibility versus the equity statement that's listed in number six, right? So to me, the equity statement that's listed in number six is we have all the projects identified and prior, and there are numbers associated with some of them, but there's a project list. And then we take a look at this project list and say, are we causing injustices, right, across the city? We're looking at a macro picture then and saying, are we causing injustices? I think what we were talking about before was giving individual projects some additional points if they if they would intentionally address an existing accessibility issue. Accessibility not limited to just disabilities, but does this community have access to this type of transportation mode? So I think there's a subtle difference there. And I think that would 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 suggest that there's a need to have a criterion spelled out for this project list, I think.
So did you want to build that in as part of the 100? Or I think Commissioner Gustafson said one way to do it would be to have your 100 points and then add even more points if you met this one criteria. It's just a number. I mean.
Can I, sorry, I don't know if you see my hand, but this is Tony Andrews. Can I just jump in here?
Yes, please.
I don't know if I'm I'm missing something, but I completely agree with what Commissioner Jones said. And I understood Commissioner Robson to be saying that the accessibility piece was a bit different from from the equity piece. But I also thought that she had a very good suggestion for how to get the accessibility piece 10 points. And it all made perfect sense to me, it all came from seemingly the right places. But I just want to make sure we're giving that idea the consideration that is due, because I thought it was good, and I felt like, wow, okay, that's a, that's a good way to do it, and to make it a component to add it to this priority list. So are we not thinking about that very good idea anymore? Or are we just kind of tossing around ideas? And I don't remember the number, except that pedestrian and bikes were going to drop to 15, I think. Yeah, I mean, that that gets it 10, that gives it a higher level of priority, or at least puts it on equal footing with some of the more important ones to the folks who weighed in on these others.
So this is Commissioner Jones. I think that's really well said, and I, I'm glad you brought that point back up. I would, the only thing I would say is, I'm not sure if it's transit or freight that should be dropped by five points. And I don't think I know enough to give you that feedback. I would suggest that your team could go back and think about which one to drop the five points.
Or drop them both, two and a half each, I don't know.
Okay. We would recommend freight. Drop the freight to five, keep the transit at 10, and then you've got pedestrians at 15, bike at 15, and access at 10.
Okay, I see heads nodding. I think, I think you struck a note that the group agrees with. I have one other question on safety. When I think of safety, I also think of public safety, and you did mention getting, you know, for instance, a fire truck through, or, you know, moving emergency responders. Does that, how is that considered?
Moving emergency vehicles?
Yeah, getting, getting emergency vehicles.
Yeah.
Both access, well, access, yeah.
Yeah, so, so safety is transportation safety, it's not public safety. We have not put emergency vehicles in, but we will essentially put it in the resiliency section. And so he has already identified routes, which pretty much line up with freight routes as well. So I think what will happen, and trying to look at my crystal ball, is our design standards will probably differentiate between like an arterial and a freight arterial. And where there's just an arterial, we'll try to make it more pedestrian-friendly, but where there's a freight arterial, we might have to make more rounded corners and things like that. So it's in your resiliency part more, right?
Yeah, in my resiliency definitely, you know, that, sorry. In my resiliency, definitely, there are some projects, like one of the major projects in resiliency is improvement to the signal systems to make it more adaptive and more efficient, right? Because that will not clog the roads so that emergency vehicles can get to the destinations in a timely manner. At the end of the day, we're saving lives, right? So, but, you know, we're talking about like traffic safety, as you said, you know, the safety analysis that we're doing, our collisions and things of this nature, but the safety part of the resiliency is emergency vehicles.
So perhaps a minor edit to that criterion, and say, improve transportation systems, resiliency, and ability to respond to man-made and/or natural disruptions or emergencies? Yeah, just to specifically recognize that. Okay, any other comments on this portion?
Commissioner Jones, I know this is going to be annoying to some people, but I'm just wondering if we could change the word "man-made" to "human-caused" or something like that. Sorry.
Sarah Gustafson, yes, women can create disruptions as well, and non-binary people.
No comment.
So the idea is that man-made is male-centered, and she wants to change? Oh, in the resiliency section, it says man-made or natural disruptions, and so it's human-made.
And we spent a lot of time on this, but at the end of the day, the criteria used to prioritize projects is very important. And it'll ultimately, I think, help the city explain why you're doing what you're doing when you're doing it, if there's a process and criteria that are followed. So thank you for, for putting up with our many comments. So I think we're ready to move on.
No, thank you for that. That's a great input, that's fantastic. So one of the things I just kind of like to leave you with, I think you guys had got the process down, we talked about the criteria. So one of the things when we have projects, and just letting you know again, the process, we're going to come out with a list of projects. We also have to associate a cost with those. And the cost is because we're going to have revenue projected over 20 years, and we'll only be able to do so much. So it is a heavy lift, and this is why it's going to take a while to get back to you probably with the prioritization, because when we identify the projects, we'll have to tell you how much it costs, and then we'll have to tell you how much revenue we have and how much we can afford. So that's all going to be part and parcel of what we come back with. With that.
So Steve, I think you summarized.
Hang on for a minute, Commissioner Gustafson?
Hey, Sarah Gustafson here. Since we're moving to the funding portion, I did want to see, did we decide to pass over the risk factors of the safety portion, or would we be discussing those later?
So I was just saying, I feel like Steve summarized this pretty well. As part of, as part of this, we are looking at what the available funds are over our planning horizon, which is the next 20 years. And so just again, we want to remind the group that the way that the available funds will be allocated will be going to ongoing and committed programs and projects that have already been identified. Vehicle capacity projects that are required to meet GMA and to meet the city's level service standards, and the remaining funds from that can go, can be allocated to the prioritized project list. So just in terms of next steps, we'll be continuing to model the future year land use scenarios to identify the types of transportation improvement projects that are needed. We'll be developing our full project list, given the other activities that are going on, including the safety plan update and the transportation system resiliency task. And then we'll be bringing back to this group the prioritized project lists, so you can see the outcome of our analysis.
So the next topic that Carmen's going to walk us through is the safety plan. Again, a lot, a lot of information is going to be tossed at you.
So we've been actively working on the update to the city's safety plan for the last year. We are transitioning the approach to addressing safety in this city through a safe systems approach, and that really emphasizes safe road users, safe vehicles, improving post-crash care, improving roadway design, and encouraging safe speeds. So the first step of this has been evaluating seven years of crash data in the city, and that included both pre-pandemic in 2016 all the way to 2022. Next slide. What we, so this map shows a crash frequency map of all crash types across the city. You can see higher frequency is shaded in yellow, and lower frequency is shaded in blue. And we've identified, which is not much of a surprise, that these crashes are occurring along main arterials in the city, where we have heavily traveled vehicle demand throughout the day. We've also noted on the map in black triangles, we call them KSI crashes, those are also fatal and serious injury crashes. That is one of the key areas of focus in terms of our safety analysis and potential countermeasures to prevent those. Next slide. I know there's a lot of information here, but I think what, the key thing to note is that over the seven years of crash data that we evaluated, there's been relatively low fatal and serious crashes, about 61 over seven years. The key takeaway that we had, though, is that while bicyclists and pedestrians are involved in 2% of all crashes, they do make up 20% of all fatal and serious injury crashes. So pedestrians and bicyclists are overrepresented in these high severity crashes, and it is an area of focus for us. And then we've got just little breakdowns in terms of the crash factors. So highest frequency crash types are rear ends entering at an angle, so not yielding, or potentially hitting a roadside object. In terms of primary crash types, we, while many feel that speeding is a high criteria, we also noted that it's actually distracted driving that has been the leading factor. And then in terms of locations where crashes happen, majority are happening at intersections or at driveways, with a slightly lower percentage occurring mid-block along street segments. Next slide.
Sure. Commissioner Robson?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a quick clarification. When you say that distracted driving is the leading factor, how does that rate for the fatalities? Is there one area of crashes that leads to more fatalities? I would think speeding would more than the distracted driving, but you've already educated me with the distracted driving stat, so do you, do you know?
I would have to go back to our crash database to be able to respond to that question.
Okay, thank you.
And while we're paused, could you tell me what post-crash care means?
So that would be ability to, for emergency response vehicles to respond to the crash site. So can ambulance or fire truck respond in a timely manner?
Okay, thank you.
So just a note, you know, all of our emergency vehicles, fire department, they have a signal preemption so that they can get through to, try to get to the injured person as quickly as possible, so we allow that to happen in what.
As part of our process, we are trying to identify key areas of the city to focus, potential countermeasure projects to improve safety. And part of this process is developing the high-risk corridors across the city. So what we did is we took every crash that has occurred in the last seven years and applied a weight to it. So higher weights for fatal and serious injury crashes, and lower weight for property damage-only crashes. What we ended up with is the map on the right showing higher-risk corridors with higher severity crashes shown in red, and then lower severity crashes shown in blue. For the next slide. This is a cleaned-up version just to show the high-risk corridors to help us focus on specific areas of the city. Next slide. Part of the safe systems approach to safety is thinking about identifying other areas of the city that have similar contextual characteristics to where serious and fatal collisions have occurred, and then evaluating the rest of the city's network to see if there are other areas with similar characteristics that we would also want to evaluate. And that would be to help prevent future fatal or serious injury crashes to occur. We looked at all 3,000-plus collisions in the city, and in terms of the serious and fatal collisions, we tried to identify what characteristics are overrepresented for those types of crashes compared to all types of crashes. And what we ended up with are these nine factors that we're looking at. So it's focused on arterials with 30-plus mile speed limits, arterials where crashes have occurred that involve pedestrians, bicyclists, areas with no streetlights nearby, near congested intersections, intersections with crashes that involved left turns or did not yield right-of-way appropriately, and then also mid-block along arterials.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Sarah Gustafson here. I didn't even ask, so thank you for, is anyone else want to speak on this? Okay, thank you. So my first question about this is, are there potential risk factors, common factors, that were considered as being common to these high-risk corridors but were not included in this analysis? I'm wondering if there was consideration given to items like wide lanes, people routinely exceeding the stated speed limits. And supervisor here, he noted pedestrian wait times leads to jaywalking. I think that might be involved in some of the crashes. And as relates to the other, to the idea that if these are in one place of the city, they might be in another place of the city that we're not looking at, I think wide lanes and people exceeding stated speed limits were quite likely factors in the crash, this, behind North Street Middle School where one child died and the other was seriously injured. So would love to hear some more on that.
We did look at a number of additional criteria that are not on the list. Part of the limiting factor is availability of the data citywide. So while there is information about speeding that were collected at certain roadways of the city, it's not exhaustive across the city roadway system, so we can't necessarily use that information as one of the key criteria that we're looking at. But what we have in place are, I think you had mentioned schools and where one fatality occurred. So one of the key things that we have to acknowledge is that this safety process, it does focus on where the majority of crashes occur, which are on arterials. But as we move through the presentation, we do acknowledge for these more local neighborhood streets, there may be improvements that are needed, and the city has identified programs that they have in place now to help address that. So there could be safe walks to school, improved crossing programs, can't remember the full list, but it is in one of the later slides.
Other comments, questions?
If I recall, posted speed limit is part of our criterion for that, not the actual speed of vehicles?
Oh, yes, that is true. Posted speed is one of our criterions.
So in a way, speeds are considered, it's just the actual speeds, we don't have that data.
So when I look at mid-block on arterials, I have a walk I take quite frequently, and one thing jumps out, and it's 19th Avenue, and there's a path on one side that ends, and there's a path on the other side that ends, and it's mid-block, and it's a 35 mile an hour, and, you know, that, I wonder what the discontinuity of the sidewalks contributes to that, and whether, when we see those breaks, if we could look at, and 15th is full of those, too. And, you know, we all understand how the sidewalks are put in as part of development, but where they end, we should look up and see, what do you do at the end of the sidewalk? And if there's another sidewalk right across the street, a crossing would And if there's another sidewalk right across the street, a crossing would be useful. And, you know, I've been walking this route for a long time, and nobody ever yields. Nobody will ever stop for you to cross mid-block. And, you know, I just wonder whether the sidewalk discontinuity contributes to that. Another, since I'm airing pet peeves, another one is right-on-red. And as a pedestrian, people don't stop, they don't yield, they just come right through. And I wonder if there is any data on that, whether right-on-red. I see a smile, perhaps doing signalization.
Do you want to start? Yes.
He's the expert. I'm going to let him talk. I will say that one of the things that Riad is very anxious to do is start working on the operation side. He's right now focused on this, the long-range side. He has a lot of great ideas that I think we're going to look at, including looking at our signal system and our ped walking, crossing. But he does have very interesting experiences that he brings from Bellevue that he will share, so.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, this is something that I literally studied for about two years before coming into here in here, because in Bellevue, we were thinking about more of right turn on red. And I understand that at one point in time, actually, people went to Olympia to try to say, hey, let's do right turn on reds everywhere in Washington. And that miserably failed, okay? Because, and there are issues with that, you know. I personally installed right turn on red at certain intersections in Bellevue where the same person who asked me to put it, asked me two weeks later, please remove it. It became more dangerous. And that's what I told her before we installed it, but she insisted that it is a safety issue. But anyways, one quick thing to think about is that when you are preventing these right turns on red, what does that mean? Is that you're going to have more people returning right turn on the green when the walk is happening, right? Now you create a longer queue, right? And not much of a... And so it all depends on volumes, proportion volumes of pedestrians and through versus right turn volumes and all of that at that intersection. So if you have a whole lot more right turning on green and the walk is happening, there is a higher potential of drivers about to get the yellow, and they have not been served, and they become more aggressive, and they're going to run into the pedestrians, right? So you can counter with that with a pay jump, with a leading pedestrian interval, you know? And, you know, we have done that in Bellevue. There are certain... I did that in Bellevue like 15 years ago, literally, at one of the intersections as a guide, and we have seen some improvements, you know? And we took it in many other different locations. But not every single location is great for right turn on red prohibition. Not every single one is great for a leading pedestrian interval. It really needs to be left for the engineer to determine based on that specific intersection with road geometry, with traffic conditions. So it should not be a blunt idea of let's just do it everywhere citywide. Should not be, you know, even an area. It should be really looked at on a case-by-case basis based on those conditions, yeah.
Well, the concern I've seen is when the pedestrian has the walk, and you're walking, and the other, the vehicles are red, they will often just not even slow down for the pedestrian that has the right-of-way, so. Just a comment, pet peeve.
Yeah.
Commissioner Westerbeck, could I ask you a question? I'm curious if we're looking at just like pilot program or idea maybe for any scrambles in Bothell. I don't know if we have any intersections that are really busy enough. I know that the places I've seen them, like down at the University of Washington, they work really well because there's a lot of people there every time, right? So maybe you have to have a certain critical mass, but I'm just curious if we're, if that's in our toolbox for when we get to be busier or certain times of day or certain intersections, if we're going to explore that at all. They seem safe, but of course, everyone's got to stop for a minute or so.
Right. Exactly. For every action, there is a reaction and unintended consequences. I tried to put in an LPI at Bellevue Way and Northeast Eighth, one of the biggest, not huge, but one of the major, major arterial and a lot of pedestrians everywhere. I backed up traffic to the freeway within five minutes. Wow. I took it out.
Okay.
So, but we had it in so many different other locations in Bellevue. And my idea is, is we need to, you know, allow me to finish this comprehensive plan.
No, it's fine.
And I'm going to go into, you know, signal operations and fine-tune a lot of these signals in here. So the idea is there. There are certain locations will definitely will benefit from it, you know? There are certain locations where there's going to be huge disadvantage, and you got to think about it. Is it really worth to go so much congestion and backup and frustration?
Sure.
In the name of trying to improve something that may or may not be an issue depending, right? So.
Right. If you can get the safety another way, I get it. I'm just glad that it is on your radar and you have experience with it. That's great. Yes.
All right. Thank you.
So the next step in our process is, given all of these criteria that we've identified, we evaluated every single street in the city to see how many risk factors that roadway met. So you will see in the map here in red corridors and segments that met more risk factors compared to other street segments in green, which may have met none or just one risk factor. Okay, the next slide.
Just pausing for a minute. I've got to say, I'm really surprised by the 35th and 240th. And I go there sometimes, and it doesn't seem that busy to be like right near the top. So do you have any ideas what's going on there? Am I not there when it's dangerous?
Are you there in the morning?
No.
That's probably when it's happening. I think it's, yeah, it's the commute, basically. And it's because it's a four-way stop. And I think right now, we've identified it. We've done a little alternative study, looking at either a roundabout or a signal, and we've picked a roundabout. And there's a developer on the northwest corner already in permitting, and they're working with us so that it can all kind of, yeah. But we don't have it funded yet, so.
Okay. Thank you.
And so taking a look at that whole map, we again have to focus in on certain intersections or corridors to evaluate potential projects to improve safety in the city. So we looked at segments that met multiple common risk factors, and then we also identified areas of those that also had some sort of serious or fatal collision occur nearby. And that resulted in the map that you see here on the right. There's about, how many? We listed out the segments and the intersections within the memo, but there's about six intersections to focus on and six corridors in the city to focus on. This is what I was referring to earlier. So again, because of the nature of this analysis, the intersections and segments that we've identified are generally on arterial roadways. In terms of improving safety on more neighborhood and local streets, the city is focusing its efforts on various programs that they have in place. So improving safe walks to school, crosswalk, sidewalk programs, neighborhood traffic calming programs, collector corridor safety evaluations. Those types of things would be in place to address concerns on, off of the arterial Next slide. So in terms of next steps for the safety plan, we'll be looking at these priority intersections and segments more closely in terms of the different crash history that has occurred there and the risk factors that those specific locations meet. And then we'll be coordinating with staff to identify potential projects to improve safety at those locations, and they'll be all rolled up into the updated safety plan. Next slide.
Let's pause for safety. Couple of things I wanted to let you guys think about a little further. The safety program, so those are one of the things that we talked about before we work all our way down. The project list is fund the safety program, so that's one of them. Riad and I are thinking about not having a lot of discrete safety programs, but maybe one safety program that addresses a lot of things, and maybe there's some line items. It would give us more flexibility. Just to give you an example of that safety program, we're currently meeting interdepartmentally. We have fire, we have police, public works, ops, and the engineers. And we have a, working off the existing safety plan. Jamal Mahmood, who's very into the safety thing, he has a list of projects that, based on input he's received and concerns he's had, we've reprioritized. We meet regularly, we talk through each location, and what we're trying to do this year is try to put out a number of local road type safety programs. Some of them might be on collective corridors. The safety program also becomes like a pot of funds for match money for grants. As an example, we just submitted a grant application that would include several RRFBs, flashing beacons, and several speed radar signs that would allow us to put it in multiple locations. So that's kind of an example of a program that we think fills in a gap. It may not be a large intersection that needs a large type of improvement, but this is kind of the program that would allow us to address the local roads and near schools and things like that. The other thing I learned in this process is we keep bringing up safe system approach. That's that holistic approach that we're looking at. That's the Federal Highway Administration version of Vision Zero, which people have heard of. Vision Zero started in Sweden back in the 1990s. That's what Europe follows, and that's what some agencies in the United States follow as well. You also hear Target Zero. So Target Zero is Washdott's version of the same thing, and that's their highway safety plan. We recommend, they all basically go toward shooting for zero deaths and zero serious injuries. Vision Zero and safe system approach holistically are pretty same ideology. They, you know, people will make mistakes, and we can make a difference by looking at it multidisciplinary, you know? What can we do to cars to make them safer? How can we do to roads? Can we reduce speeds? Can we make sure the emergency response is there? So it's kind of a holistic approach. We're recommending we follow the safe system approach because that's the Federal Highway Administration approach. It's pretty much, like I said, same ideology as Vision Zero, and the goals are the same. But since it follows that path, and there are funding opportunities, and we know we would be in line with basically the federal system, that's the one we're calling it. And I think with that, is, are there any more questions on safety?
Last, in our last meeting, you mentioned something about the guiding principle number three, if you recall from Kirsten. We already modified that, and you will be seeing an improvement to it. That includes the Vision Zero, safe system approach, I should say.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
All right. Move on to public engagement.
So in terms of public engagement for the transportation element, it's taken many forms over the last year. Some of it has been in concert with the comprehensive plan engagement process, and some have been standalone transportation element events that we've gone out to the community. So as a reminder, the various approaches we've taken have included an online survey, online web map exercise, and then also various in-person summer events. Those have taken place in downtown Bothell, but we've also gone out to where the public are. So we've gone to table outside a grocery store. We've also made efforts to go and have separate meetings specifically at manufactured housing communities to try and gain new perspectives from people who may not typically be part of the transportation planning process. Next slide. So overall, we had over 150 comments from the community. We've mapped those on the right here, just in terms of areas that the comment has been made about, and we've color-coded it by the primary mode that theme has been about. And a summary of what we heard overall is on the left-hand side of this slide. So safety has been a big concern from the community. Sidewalk gaps has also been brought up many times. There has been a desire for more multimodal connections in the city and a better accessibility transit stops. There have been a number of comments also just about winter weather and how it impacts people's mobility. There have been also land use and development comments as well that we've included here just in terms of a desire for mixed use, more mixed-use developments and more street-corner We've also heard about a desire for ensuring that the transportation planning is considering not just downtown Bothell, but citywide. And also kind of looking ahead to the future, are we addressing electric vehicle infrastructure? Are we protecting tree canopies and advocating for green space? And then, of course, we also heard concerns about traffic congestion, delay, long queues during peak hours, as well as concerns about curbside management and parking enforcement in various areas of the city. Next slide. So in terms of next steps, we'll be looking in more detail about the comments that we've received, as well as how that may be related to the safety priority intersections and segments we've identified, and that'll help be incorporated into potential countermeasure projects that we suggest. And we'll also be preparing for the upcoming May comprehensive plan open house.
That's it?
That's it.
I believe that's our presentation. I mean, if there are further questions, we'd be happy to try to respond to them or any other input.
Commissioner Jones?
Commissioner Jones, just want to congratulate you on how thorough you were in terms of capturing people's voices from all walks of life, and also really proud of our city in terms of the comments and the feedback that they provided. I think it aligns really well with what you're doing. And then finally, just once again, your group just listens so well, and I just want to appreciate just you folks for all you're doing.
Other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Westerbeck?
I'll give you a brief. I just want to echo what Commissioner Jones said, just everything. And this is just super-rich amounts of information. I suspected some of it, but you just don't know until you guys bring us data. So it's fascinating, it's useful, it's actionable. It just feels like light years beyond where we were six, seven, eight years ago. And I know, you know, you only know what you know at the time, so the progress is really exciting to see, so thank you.
So I'll echo the other comments. Thank you for the presentations. They've been very educational, very encouraging to see the direction we're going, and look forward to next time you come and talk with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that concludes the study session. Next item on the agenda is reports from staff. Do we have any reports from staff? I see staff coming forward.
Hello, yes. Nice to see you all. A few different things. So this week, we were, we got in touch with Sound Transit. They're doing an engagement process. Thank you for bringing that to the table, Commissioner Gassipson. We've connected with them. We're going to be meeting with them to talk about how that looks and what next steps are, and how we can involve the commission and council and other folks. So we'll sort of take that from here, and we'll keep you posted on how that goes. I have a meeting with them tomorrow, so. And then early May for the comp plan event, we are looking at... And then early May for the comp plan event, we are looking at the first week of May, so pencil that in. We are also planning on doing two events. One weekday, King County side, weekend, Snow County side. So that way, we're getting feedback from two different days and times. We're also getting feedback from two parts of the community, so looking forward to that. Details coming soon, theme coming soon. And then last but not least, this will be my last planning commission with you all. I am, I'm leaving the city at the end of the month, and I just wanted to say farewell, and it's been wonderful to work with you all. And if you need anything from me in the future, I will be in touch. But you've been a delight to work with, so thank you for having me.
Well, thank you for working with us. You'll be missed. You bring a lot to the table, so thank you.
It's very bittersweet for me, because I love it here, but.
All right. Edit for reports from staff?
There you go. Yep.
All right. Reports from members. Around the table, Commissioner Gustafson.
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. I'm not sure if this is the right place for this, but we did receive a pretty in-depth email from one of our constituents, and I wondered how we could respond to her about getting her in touch with maybe the permit enforcement agency to make sure that she's getting what she needs.
So that did come to us through staff. I don't recall any, I see, perhaps a response.
Yeah, we could possibly do that. I'm pretty sure I know which letter you're talking about, so.
The only one we got today.
Yeah, I can follow up on that. Yeah.
That'd be great. If you could just let us know what happens with that, we'd appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you.
Other reports from members? I'll update, last night, there was a board and commission, what do we call it, open house? Because we have a vacancy here. Two commissioners' terms are expiring. You can reapply, of course. And other commissions also have openings. So there was a little get-together just down the way a little bit in this building where people came in and talked about, or asked questions about the commissions. It was very interesting. I talked to more than a half dozen people about planning and what we do and what their interests might be. So it was very useful. There were a number of council members there, too, chatting with people. It was right before the council meeting, so they interacted, and I think it was good to have, and I think it will help for our vacancy. Anything else? Items to report to council? Seeing none, there being no further business, is there a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Westerback?
Commissioner Westerback here. I move to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
I just want to stay here forever.
Well, miss most, too.
Without a second, we will.
Yeah, I know. We'll just be here all night.
All right.
Breaks my heart, but I will second, yeah.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Therefore, the meeting is adjourned tonight at 7:53. Our next meeting will be February 21st. See you then.
We actually will not be having a meeting on February 21st.
Ah, okay. I think it was still on the city's calendar.
It probably is. I'm working on that. It's on my to-do list this week, sorry.
Imagine Bothell came out and said there was none.
Okay. Yeah, I thought I saw it in two places, and I checked the calendar. So that would mean our next meeting would be March 6th. So we'll see you all around this table for a while. All right. Well, we are adjourned. Thank you all, and see you in March.